Good evening and welcome to our November Board Meeting. We're glad to be at East Jackson, um, excuse me, I'm so sorry, West Jackson. I hate this east-west mess. But West Jackson Middle School. And I would like to, since today is Veterans Day, and we are so blessed to have so many good people that have fought to give us the freedom that we have, I would like, if we've got veterans in our presence, would you please stand and be recognized at this time? Thank you, we appreciate your service so very much. And we are going to begin with the pledge. So I met three distinguished young FFA members that are gonna come over at this time and lead us in our pledge. Alright, thank you very much. Are y'all ready to do something for us now?
I was just gonna say hello, just introduce the kids.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you all for coming tonight. And as you came in, you saw some children singing and dancing out in the atrium, most of you. This is a part of the cast of Frozen Junior. We will be putting Frozen Junior on February 7th, 8th, and 9th at the, um, at the Jackson County Comprehensive High School Auditorium. So keep your eyes open for our advertisements. So we still have quite a wa- a ways to go, but I was really happy to see probably close to half the cast. We've got forty to fifty kids in the, in the show this year, so we hope you can all come and see it. Thank you for letting us come tonight.
Thank you very much. We did enjoy, can y'all hear me? This sounds like it's not even working. Is it working? I guess so, okay. But I hope y'all got to hear the chorus just a little bit as you were coming in, they were outstanding. They do such a good job for us. Alright, um, I hope everybody's had a chance to look over your minutes from our previous meeting. And do I have a motion that we accept the minutes?
So moves.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, very good. Alright, and, um, the approval of our agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections?
No ma'am, I, I think Dr. Blankenship sent you a revised personnel list, so other than that, agenda stands.
Okay, very good. Alright, do I have a motion that we accept our agenda?
So moves.
Okay, in a second?
Take it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And let me just mention right before we get to our superintendent's comments, uh, Ms. Claricey is in the building. He's actually coaching some of the students in the gym, so he'll be joining us shortly. Okay, and at this time we'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler, and our board, um, really enjoy being out of the schools. I wanna thank all of you for being here, and it's a distinguished pleasure to be back at West Jackson Middle School and see the outstanding things that are happening, and we have a wonderful crowd. Um, as Ms. Wheeler recognized, um, it is Veterans Day, and I wanna send a very special thank you to our veterans and also extend that to our schools. All of our schools have a veterans ceremony, and, and thank you for the efforts that went into that. I visited one, two today. But I also understand that, um, this Casey Moody, who's the, the teacher here, the FFA teacher, and her group facilitated an amazing ceremony here at West Jackson Middle School as well, and this, um, that you see over there is a part of their, their ceremonial, um, honoring of, of those veterans, so thank you all for that. Those of you who are not familiar with our board meetings, each month we rotate to a different school in an effort for two reasons, really. One, is to highlight the schools and have an opportunity to see what's going on, but also to give our community members an opportunity to visit a board meeting and interact with our board and see what our amazing kids are doing. So we're gonna start this evening by asking Dr. Conway, the principal here, to share a little bit about the highlights of West Jackson Middle School. So thank you for hosting us.
As you can probably see, we have like a hodgepodge of craziness that is, goes on here on a daily basis, and it is controlled chaos, is what I like to say as I look back at the kids. Um, we really do have just the best, like if you wanna come and hang out with us, I'm telling you, we have the best kids. They are wonderful, and today in our Veterans Day ceremony, this will, this will attest to that, we only could put our seventh and eighth grade in the gym because we could not fit the sixth graders, but they were all quiet and attentive and were very engaged in the entire thing, and that's something to say for having eight hundred kids in a gym, um, doing something like Veterans Day. So I was very proud of them, but that's just who they are here. So, um, I am going to let them speak because this is their school, and, um, I'm really proud of what they're putting together. So I'm gonna go ahead and have some of our student leadership team members come on up? Maybe? So they're gonna play a slideshow, you can see some pictures of, of some different initiatives that we have going on here, but why don't you guys come over here so that way you can use the mic? They're going to tell you about four of the things that we have implemented or we're continuing to do this year. So go ahead and introduce yourself and then...
Hello, my name is Kira Hamilton, and I am in seventh grade at WJMS. I'd like to tell you about our school houses. Our houses are red, white, silver, and black. Each house has their own unique trait. You each have a shirt with your name on it representing one of our houses, based on a trait we think you represent, although we all have pieces of each house's trait. Our students were placed in houses based on personality tests. Fun fact, Dr. Conway took the personality test four times and got different results each time. She landed in red house, where she belongs. Red house is a house of creativity. White house is a house of perseverance. Silver house is a house of ambition, and black house is a house of diligence. Our houses complete, compete to earn house points by helping others and demonstrating excellent behavior. House points can be earned for behavior, attendance, and academic achievement. At the end of each semester, the house per grade level with the most points gets various incentives. Competing among houses makes students more accountable to each other because they want their houses to be successful.
Hello, my name is Andrew Turner, and today I would like to talk to you guys about our, uh, reward system called PBIS. PBIS is a system used for teaching students positive behavior and, uh, just great actions overall for our school. Students receive points for modeling awesome behavior and can cast those points in for various rewards and school store items. PBIS helps students and teachers know what to expect at school, and, um, they, uh, teaches them to help around the school and, uh, show positive actions around the peers. Part of our PBIS program is mentor time. Once or twice a month, every student meets with a mentor. Their mentor is not usually one of their teachers, and, and they have a mentor class with a small group of other students. We have meaningful conversation during mentor time, and we build positive relationships. Plus, we get to know and have fun with people we don't get to see all the time. All in all, PBIS is a great reward system for all students, and it teaches us how to act around our school and, uh, just show positive behavior all around.
Hello, I'm Allison Yonkoo, and I'm a seventh grade student on the West Jackson Middle School's team team. I'd like to tell you about ELT. ELT is Extended Learning Time. During this time, students have different enrichment or support experiences for half an hour twice a week. We have opportunities to meet new people in different grade levels and try new things such as karaoke, crafting, chess, zoology, coding, mythology, creative writing, tapestry making, yoga, joke telling, stress relief, and coin block gambling. There are also support classes for students who need help with math, Spanish, reading, and writing. Students really enjoy new, to try new things with old and new friends. Next semester, I wanna continue ELT and hope to have it even more often than we do now.
Hi, I'm Emma Mardos, and I'd like to tell you about No Place For Hate. This year, our school is committed to being a No Place For Hate school. This encourages students to treat one another with kindness and respect regardless of their differences. We believe that every student should feel safe and included at our school. This initiative promotes the idea that one, that one student can indeed make a difference. It helps us as students remember that what we do counts.
Over here so that, uh, we're not so far away from the mic box, but the, the four earlier students were all seventh graders, and Gigi, Gia Lani, is a lovely sixth grader, and he has had great ideas for our student leadership team in, um, our No Place For Hate initiative. You all have a bracelet, um, that our kids are sporting and going around, and they've signed the pledge, and we have lots of cool ideas. Do you remember what our ideas for sixth grade, what we're gonna do?
Humans of West Jackson.
Kind of like the humans of New York page, and so, No Place For Hate is an initiative that really just honors diversity and being kind to one another, like the kid said, but I just want the kid teaching to shout out because he's in sixth grade! So as you can see, there are a lot of different things going on, and I really could have, we really could have sat here and talked to you for a long time about the different things that we're doing, and we would bore you to death probably, but, uh, we do want you to know that there are great things happening here and that we would love to have you at any point come in and hang out with our awesome kids. Every day is amazing. It is so fun to get up and come to work here and hang out with our faculty and our kids, so, um, we're really blessed to have them. Like I said, we invite you, so that's our showcase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conway, and all of you students did a great job. It was nice to hear all the, uh, activities going on here. They're right in line with our system's vision of making sure that every student has a mentor and someone who's advocating for their success, so we're glad to hear that. It's an honor every month for us to be able to recognize our Rotary students. Uh, they, these students are, are selected, and then they select a teacher who has been very influential to them, so I'm gonna ask if Ms. Palmer from East Jackson Comprehensive High School could come forward and introduce both your student and teacher for this month. Uh, as they're coming forward, the Jefferson Rotary, um, has these students for lunch and recognizes them and, uh, honors the, the great work that they've done. So we'll let Ms. Palmer introduce the East Jackson Rotary student.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Avery McClure, who is the daughter of Keith and Tanya McClure, and they cannot be here tonight, which is very unusual because they're incredibly supportive parents that are at most of our school's activities. Um, Avery is a top-notch student, and I think you'll see that when I read a little bit about her biography, and just listen to some of the classes that she is taking. If I can get my page turned here. She's a part of our dual enrollment program with the University of North Georgia who comes to our campus, and she's already taken several courses last year, and she's in, um, American Lit, which is a sophomore-level English class, as well as macroeconomics this year through the dual enrollment program. She's also taking AP classes on our campus, so she is in AP Chemistry, and Mr. Bolz should be glad to know she's also taking AP Calculus. And, um, she's also involved in our master band, and, um, our audio/video class is in Level Three there, so this is a student who's going to end up completing pathways in Fine Arts and CTAE in addition to all the academic work that she's doing. And she's also involved in our yearbook class, which is called Graphic Design and Production. She's not just involved in it, she's the editor of our yearbook. Um, in addition to that, she has several other leadership roles in our school. She is the president of our student council. She is our FCA, or Fellowship of Christian Athletes, vice president. She's in Beta Club, Concert Man, National English Honor Society, and she's the cameraman, or camera woman, and co-producer for the school-wide podcast. She's also involved in our athletic program, she plays golf, and she's involved in the cheerleading program. And she has a number of awards, um, the University of Georgia Certificate of Merit. She is part of the Governor's Honors Program nominee group from last year. She's received the Women of the World, Woodman of the World Award. She was our homecoming queen this year, and she's, um, also lettered academically twice already, and I would expect that a third time this year. In addition to all these things, she's also involved in community service, I don't know how she has come, but she manages to do this as well. And she teaches preschool, uh, Sunday school. She is a volunteer for the Operation Christmas Child, um, activities at Masonville Baptist Church. She's also involved in Vacation Bible School Day. She's been a part of the Re Life For Life team through Beta Club, she's also been involved in Camp Convention, and I serve food ministry, so she is just the all-around full package. And I'm gonna let Avery tell you a little bit about her plans after high school, as well as why she chose Miss Lawford as her most influential teacher.
Okay, so after high school, I'm planning on going to a four-year university. I've applied to four so far, and I'm about to finish my fifth one. And I'm hoping that once I get there, I, um, will study psychology, and, um, my main goal is to have a job that I can be happy at every day, but can also help others and benefit others. And I'm also very excited to travel abroad during college. And then I chose Miss Lawford because last year, um, I really wanted to take yearbook, I thought I would really enjoy it, and she fit me into her planning period, and even though, um, it was my first year and I was separated from the rest of the class, she let me be on leadership, and then now I can see her like several hours every day and we get to hang out all the time. And she encourages me to make, be confident and be creative and, um, be independent and really just be the best I can be, and I really appreciate it.
Congratulations to both of you. I, it is very humbling to listen to these students and these teachers. I don't know that most of us as adults could juggle the numbers of things that these kids do, and they do it so well. Uh, Mr. Wester, if you could come forward and introduce this Rotary student and teacher from Jackson County High School.
Good evening, everyone. It is, uh, my pleasure this evening to have this opportunity to speak for just a few moments about, uh, one of the many outstanding students of Jackson County High School, and this month we are recognizing this Kylie Zimmer. And Kylie is the daughter of Melinda and JR, who are here with us tonight, we're grateful for them. They're great supporters of our, of our school in so many ways, we're grateful for that. And Kylie is a great, uh, representative of the family, and we're super glad, glad for this opportunity to recognize you here. Um, this year and in the past, Kylie has certainly take, taken an academic load that is commendable, and, um, something that, uh, as like Dr. Howard said, I don't think I could have handled this certainly, uh, in my day. This year, she's taking AP Macroeconomics and AP Government, she's taking Honors Physics, Advanced Composition, AP BC Calculus, she's the second course of calculus, uh, at the AP level, and she's also doing some weight training. She has taken AP Human Geography, AP Lang, AP World History and US History, as well as AB Calculus last year. And, uh, that's certainly an academic load that will be impressive as she is looking to further her career next, uh, year at college. She is also a star on our volleyball team, which is a Final Four team this year in 3A. She was a captain of that team, a two-time captain. Um, she was, um, well, let me get back to some things she does before we get to the awards. She also participates and has been, uh, chosen to be part of our National Honor Society, as well as the Beta Club at Jackson County High School, which are both service and honorary organizations, and she is a member of our student leadership team. She has won the Athletic Directors Award for volleyball, she's a top five percent of her class recipient. She's an AP Scholar, she's won the Scholar-Athlete Award, she's been the MVP of the volleyball team for the last two years, and also she has been chosen as First Team All-Area the last two years in volleyball as well. I'm gonna let Kylie talk a little bit about her future, uh, and also allow her to introduce her most influential teacher, Mr. Stephen Bolz.
So, oh gosh, sorry my voice, I'm lost. Um, next year, I'm going to be playing volleyball at the University of Obergeorge. Um, I'm looking forward to majoring in Biology, and then after that, I'm hoping to go to physical therapy school so I can pay for it and help young athletes like myself later on. Um, I chose Mr. Bolz 'cause, uh, last year going into AB, um, I heard how great he was, and then it was really proven last year. Um, he's one of the most hardy-working teachers I know, and he's dedicated, and I know how much he cares about each and every one of his students. Um, he never lets us have a negative mindset, like, you can ever say like, "I can't do something," we always try to work through it, even on like the AP exam when you don't know something, you still push through it and even make something up if you have to just to finish the problem. But he's one of the most fantastic teachers I've ever had, and I thank him.
Congratulations to both of you. Um, we appreciate Mr. Bolz, he's been here a couple of times, and we, we know the influence he has, congratulations. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Todd Nicholson. Each year we have the opportunity to go through a process to recommend students for a Governor's Honors Program, which he's gonna tell you a little bit about, um, but it is quite an opportunity for our students. So Mr. Nicholson, can you help us understand what an honor this is?
Absolutely. So first and foremost, I'm not supposed to be standing up here, Ms. Jen Sane is the one who is the, the facilitator of Governor's Honors, she's the one that deserves all the credit and should, uh, be up here celebrating the recognition of our amazing students, but she, as, uh, many other folks, um, this time of year, has come down with a cold and upper respiratory infection, and we appreciate that she's not bringing that here to us. So, so, um, she did, she did prepare me. I mean, she, she's probably watching right now, so I'm not going to stray, Ms. Jen, I'm going to stay on course. Uh, let me tell you a little bit about Governor's Honors, though. Uh, it's a program that's a part of the Governor's Office of Student Achievement. It's a four-week summer program that's housed at Berry College, and it truly is a life-changing event. For the students that go to it, they will come back and tell you that, that that is the number-one thing that prepared them for college, because they truly are at college. Here they are, high school students, they, they are immersed in Socratic circles, collaboration, it's, it's a, it's just phenomenal. We had the opportunity this past, like, last month to, uh, hear from some of our students who had recently attended, and, and it is, it's absolutely amazing. Uh, but what I wanna tell you a little bit about is this year, underneath Ms. Sane, we did something a little different. Uh, it used to be that the schools do their work, and they do an amazing job of identifying students through criteria and rubrics and teacher recommendations, and then they work and they prepare the students, and they continue to do that this year, but we wanted to, as a district and teaching and learning team, find a way to also support and recognize students. So we had our first-ever, uh, Celebration and Preparation Day. They came over to Gordon Street Center, where teaching and learning is housed, we had mock interviews, we had judges there, we had, as I mentioned, we had student panels, which we were really kinda not supposed to go in and listen, but I couldn't help it. I mean, it was just amazing to listen to these kids talk about their experiences, and, and when we come to these board meetings, we joke, but we're actually serious. Kids out there, you high school folks, you're way more impressive than we were. Uh, so the future is bright. I mean, I have major, major hope for the future. And, and so what we did is we were able to prepare the students as best we could, give them, uh, some experiences that would prepare them for a district competition. I want you to, these are numbers that Jen prepared for me. Uh, I'll read the exact quote, actually. Being nominated as a GHP candidate is something to be proud of. There are approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand students across the state of Georgia eligible for this honor. Out of these two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand students, three-thousand-four-hundred will be nominated to continue the process, and it is up to the GHP state leaders to narrow the three-thousand-four-hundred nominees to six-hundred-and-sixty finalists. So I did a little math, that's one-point-three-six percent who advance to the state level and point-two-six-four who will be selected to attend in the summer. And every year, Jackson County Schools sends folks on that actually get to attend at Berry College, so that is a testament to our teachers, our students, our parents, and, and folks that, that really truly pour into their children and allow them to succeed in every way possible. What I'd like to do now is, and this is, it's a Monday evening, and these are folks that, much like, uh, the two students that we just heard from, they're, they're incredibly busy, and so we actually have twenty-eight students that, that I will call your name. If you were here, I would like for you to come up, and I'd like to give your certificate, um, but I, I realize that many folks have already indicated that they're out and doing the other things that make them so successful. So if I call your name, and we'll just kinda hold applause, um, until, until the, the end, un- unless you just can't hold it in, that's okay too, I understand. Um, so, in no particular order, uh, the, what I'm gonna do is begin calling names, and they're from East High as well as Jackson County High School. So I have Kayden Barnett, Morgan Byers, Bella Chandler, Victoria Comfort, Chandler Hodges, Najah Gerald's, Carly Loggins, Emily Parker, Justin Perry, Marissa Thomas, I believe Marissa's here this evening. Let's applause for Marissa. Marissa Thomas, Penn and Shue, Alyssa Smith, Seth Vasquez, Addison Baumann, Evan Bone, Meredith Cameron, Griffin Cobb, Sarah Delay, Mustafa Diallo, Grayson Dutton, Alyssa Fejes, Anna Jibo, Morgan Gregory, Jake Johnson, Hunter Luckacharn, Savannah McGee. Did I not say it correct? You told me I was gonna say it correct. How was it?
La Ketron.
La Ketron. Sorry, La. La Ketron. Suchet Patel, and Lindsey Weinman. And I believe Lindsey is here as well. So let's give these three young ladies a round of applause. Some of these, some of the folks that I listed will, will advance on to the, the state, and what that requires is an additional, uh, level of completing application, putting together a sample of work. If you're in Fine Arts, you actually have to, uh, record yourself performing, and, and this is not an easy task. This is not one of those things that you just add to your list of things to do because it's gonna look good. These are students that are truly passionate about the work and they're driven, and so when we, when we celebrate those folks in the next couple of months, we'll make sure you know who is going on to the state level, and, and we inevitably will have folks that go to Berry College. I do wanna say on behalf of Ms. Jen Sane, uh, she, she would be kind of upset that I've already mentioned her several times, but this is a team effort. We have Ms. Cass Robinson, who has definitely contributed her time, energy, and expertise. Uh, we have several judges, the teaching and learning team came together, we have all sorts of people that pulled together to make this happen this year, so all of you, uh, in front of the scenes, behind the scenes, I'm so grateful for your assistance, and thank you for this opportunity to recognize our students. And we're gonna step over and I'm gonna give you all certificates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. I had the privilege to be in a part of that day, and it was a delight to sit and talk with them and mentor those students, and they've got bright futures for sure. We also have the opportunity to recognize some bus safety poster winners, so if I could ask Mr. Palmer to come forward and tell us who won the bus safety contest this year, if you're a poster contestant.
Thank you, Dr. Howard and the board, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak and recognize some outstanding and upcoming artists that we have in our complete system. It's always great to be able to be a part of, of things that, that recognize students, and, um, this is no exception. Each year, the State Department sends us a, uh, topic, and we send it out to the elementary and middle schools, and, uh, we get to see all the artwork, and we had several hundred, um, artists that submitted their drawings, and each one of them is just like, "Man, this is great this way, this is great this way." Of course, there's always certain criteria, you have to have a school bus in it, which, surprisingly, and then also you have to have the topic. This year's topic was "Red Lights Mean Stop," so that's very important, as everyone knows, but, uh, Ms. Sane, that, uh, if East Jackson Elementary, Ms. Allison Pink, if she'll come forward. And I know that Ms. Kimberly Alexander, we were hoping, oh, she is here, okay, great, we were not sure if she's gonna make it, but if Ms. Kimberly Alexander will come- But if Ms. Kimberly Alexander will come up, please. I really liked this picture because it had a lot of bright colors and it really stood out when we were judging it. It was one that we put back and said, "Okay, it's gonna be in the top two. We're just not sure which yet." And in her division, she did a great job. She incorporated the topic and the school bus and did a wonderful job in representing our Jackson County School Transportation Department. So, congratulations to Ms. Bank. If you have anything like that?
Well, I asked our art teacher to take this on as a project in the classroom. And of course, she did with great gusto. And she said that Kimberly was one of those students that, from the get-go, was like, "I got this. I'm doing this." So, and it's obvious in her poster. So, we're just so proud of Kimberly for all that she did and her artistic ability.
Thank you so much. Let's give her another round of applause. And it only gets better from here because the artists are tremendous. Like I said, it's very, it's humbling to see. I mean, I can't even draw stick figures. And if these guys are able to draw pictures that I would purchase, so it's amazing. Our next recipients are from North Jackson Elementary. So, Ms. Johnson, if you'll come up. And Ms., now, forgive me. I've been practicing these names for most of the day. So, if I do mess them up, I do apologize. But Holly Nishlin, did I get that right?
Nicklin.
Nicklin, okay. I do apologize. I totally did that incorrect. I should let you know. If she would come forward. And this is her drawing. And here again, she has the bus in the picture. And she even has the county name, which I really like, and our topic. So, very good job. Did a wonderful job. And like I said, I really like the way that she expresses the grass, it's a good point, the stop sign, and everything to the minor detail that's a requirement she put in her poster. So, congratulations. And Ms. Johnson, if you'd like to say any words?
I would love to. So, I'm new at North Jackson this year. So, I'm getting to know the kids and enjoying that very much. And Holly actually happens to be in the same class that my daughter is in. So, I hear about Holly at home, all good things. Don't worry. So, I asked Ms. Long, her teacher, what she might say about her. And she said Holly is a very kind person. She is respectful and works well with others. Holly pays attention well in class and contributes to class conversations across all content areas. She is very neat and thorough and gives her best effort in everything that she does. So, congratulations.
And we do have one more contestant winner that was also sent to the state. And Samuel Borick, if you are here, please come forward. Now, I really like this poster. And as you can see, you talk about detail. He even has curbs and trees. And I love the little red light on top of the bus. That's really cool. But really did an excellent job, took his time. You can tell the amount of detail that was spent on this picture. So, congratulations. And Ms. Johnson?
Of course. So, Samuel, like me, is new to North Jackson this year. And he has been a wonderful asset to our school already. Actually, when I called to let his parents know about this award, his dad laughed and said he was drawing from the time he came out. So, that is definitely something to know about Samuel. But what Ms. Bolz had to say about him is that he is creative and thinks of different ways to solve problems. He easily grasps new information and makes connections to new ideas. She said he is very eager to learn and has a great smile. Let's see. He's also already joined our robotics club and is just a really wonderful addition to our school. So, congratulations to you.
I just want to say you might want to get their autograph when they leave here because I would imagine they'll be future artists. So, great jobs. Very good job. West Jackson Middle School. If Dr. Conway will come up and join you, please. This picture that I'm about to show you, it was, is probably one of the most creative pictures that we have ever had in this competition just from looking through a different lens. And you'll see what I'm talking about when I show it to you. But will Bridget Ogle, did I get that right? Come forward, please. Yes, I got one right. So, if you see here, I love the way that she incorporated looking through a pair of lenses. And that was very creative. If I had an award for the most creative poster, this would be the one that I would choose. Great job, great insight, and just incorporating everything, all the nice stop signs you put on there. So, congratulations. And Dr. Conway?
So, Bridget is super, super sweet and wonderful. If you drive around our Westside neighborhood, you may see some West Jackson Middle School Student of the Month signs. And there's been one in her yard. So, she's just, she really epitomizes everything, everything that it means to be a West Jackson Middle School student. So, not only is she a great artist, but she's just a really good citizen and always has a smile on her face, even though she's not smiling right now. And it's just absolutely lovely and wonderful. And thankfully, she's only a seventh grader. So, we have a couple more years, one more year out of it.
Okay, you have to come back because you didn't get your picture taken. So, you gotta make sure you come all the way back up. Nice trying to get out of there. The next individual that we had, and I please forgive me for mispronunciation if I do that, as you can see, English was probably not one of my better subjects. But Anka Day from High School, did I get that right? Is it close? Is she here?
She's here.
Okay. We want to say congratulations to you. One of the great things that I do like about her poster is very vivid with color. You can tell that she is a true artist. She likes to make the colors up and make them flow. The great thing that I liked about this poster is the fact that it actually had some bus rooms on it. So, that was really great, the way you incorporated that in there. And I really liked that. Even had people on it. You can see them waving. They look happy on the bus scene and well behaved. So, I was really impressed with that. So, congratulations, and Dr. Conway?
Well, Anka, this is a second year in a row. She's a winner. So, can you redo what you did in the hallway when I told you that you won? Can you do what you?
Oh, I didn't know our number.
Okay. She was so excited. She threw both her arms up and went, "Yes!" Was super, super excited. And of course, I was really happy, too. She's also, we are really good at picking out really great artists for our Students of the Month because she also has been one of our Students of the Month. And it's such, you can tell that she just exudes joy and is wonderful. And we love having her here. And obviously, now we're gonna start like marketing and making some money off of these kids. We're proud of both of you.
Once again, I want to say thank you for the opportunity just to recognize these young individuals. And also, the parents that came out tonight. If you guys will just stand, you need to be recognized also because you did such a great job supporting our students. But you truly do, you have some future artists that are up and coming. So, I will be calling on to make sure I get some autographs. And I look forward to even next year. This year, we had, like I said, several hundred entries. And it was tough. It's amazing the talent that we have. And I'm like, wow, this is just, so we had to get a panel together and say, "Okay, guys, we're just gonna have to come to a conclusion." And, you know, the one with the sunglasses, like I said, if we had a category that was most creative, we talked about it. And I said, "You know, we just need to give an award to that." But great job. Appreciate the state and their support and all this. And thank you once again. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Clarice's return and his volunteer other service. He's been helping keep the clock from that clocking. So, we're glad he's back. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Blankenship to come forward and present our Excellence in Service Awards. And as she's coming forward, she'll tell you a little bit about it. But these are folks that are recommended from the general public. These are not selected internally. Usually, these are just either employees or community members who have made a difference in excellent time and service to compete.
Good evening. I am happy to be here to honor three individuals tonight. Two are nominated as a pair, as a team, and then one individual. So, both of these were nominated by parents. So, anyone can nominate someone for an Excellence in Service Award. And the only criteria is that their service has to go above and beyond and really be seen in the eyes of the nominator as something that, you know, has really stood out from the rest. So, I would like to call Ms. Jenna Banks to come up first. Ms. Banks is a teacher at East Jackson Comprehensive High School. And she was nominated by a parent who wished to remain anonymous. But here's what that parent had to say. "Ms. Banks has been my son's teacher for several years. She is the best teacher he's ever had. She really cares about his learning and goes above and beyond to help him." Some of this may actually give away who it is, but they, I'm just following her wishes. If you figured out, it's not my fault, right? It's what they wrote. "When he wasn't cooperating in speech therapy and could not attend, she took on his speech therapy in her own classroom. He has grown so much mentally and emotionally in her care. She treats every child as her own, not just a job. You can tell she loves her students and wants the best for them all." Congratulations, Ms. Banks. Our next honorees are Ms. Natalie Jackson and Ms. Tina Johnston from West Jackson Elementary School. They were nominated by a parent named James Paul Aston. And here is what this nominator had to say. "The other day, I had an honor of attending a parent-teacher conference. The exhibited behavior of community education by two of your educators witnessed should be a standard that's embodied not only across West Jackson Elementary, but Jackson County school system as a whole. For students to achieve a comprehensive, well-rounded education, integrated teamwork on several fronts is vital. Teamwork is necessary between students and teachers, as well as parents and teachers. As a team of educators create a crossover educational experience which is beneficial to both the student and educator alike, Ms. Natalie Jackson and Tina Johnston have embodied, in my humble opinion, the aforementioned statements. They are bridging the gap. These two exceptional educators have taken the young minds they are responsible for and ignited a wildfire of passion for learning in those they serve, especially my kid. I'm not the easiest parent to deal with." I get their words, not mine. "When it comes to educating my children, I will challenge any educator when I feel there's something missing in my child's educational journey or that the basic foundational needs are not being met. With the current climate of education and the need for the US to play catch-up, we are missing some of the foundational education needs of our children. The system that is currently in place at West Jackson Elementary is a true example of No Child Left Behind. We may not be able to fill and submit all the gaps in education, but together as a team, students, parents, and educators, we have a fighting chance. And every day is another opportunity to bridge the gap. If there's any way that the two fine educators can be recognized, I would like to know how." So, here you are tonight, being recognized. Congratulations to all.
Congratulations, ladies, and all three of those outstanding teachers who we are very grateful for serving our students. At this time, we have one more exciting award. And this is a very special one. I'd like to ask Mr. Ted Gilbert to come forward. And if he can bring with him Dr. Deborah Morris. If y'all could come to the podium, I want to tell you a little bit about a very, very special recognition. A couple of weeks ago, I had a secret email from the State Department saying, "We need you to come to Athens." And we're gonna put you in hiding because Dr. Morris doesn't know this yet. But she's gonna be the recipient of a very, very special and important award. So, it was quite a privilege to be able to be there and see her recognized. Those of you who don't know, school nutrition is a very important part of the daily activities of our students, and they take great care. And Dr. Morris will tell you that certainly she is the leader of that group, that she treasures the people who work with her, alongside her, and in her school. So, this was called the Nexus Award. I'm gonna tell you just a little bit about it. I have to read the details. The Nexus Award is recognition that honors an elite group of school nutrition programs and their directors who have created outstanding nutrition programs in their districts. According to that information, there is a large and a small and a supersized district. And Jackson County Schools, under Dr. Morris's leadership, was recognized as the Large System School Nutrition Program of the Year. That is a very big accomplishment, and that all goes to Dr. Morris. I think you've got some leaders here where you probably would like to ask them to stand as well, some other folks that are part of your program. If you work in our school nutrition program and you're here as a part of that, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well? Juanita Stenber, Stephanie Stenber, and Dr. Kenny High School, and Diane Epps, who's been in the role of supporting school nutrition for a couple of decades now. Please.
I'd like to say something, too. I had the privilege in September of joining Dr. Morris on two occasions. One was in Atlanta as she received the Platinum Award, the Golden Radish Platinum Award once again. And then we traveled that same week to Macon where she led an emergency training session for school nutrition specialists across the state. It's a pleasure and it's a blessing to get to stand with you. I didn't get to, I didn't do anything to deserve this, but she and those folks out there, great job. We appreciate it very much.
To get a chance to go by and see that award, it's quite beautiful and very deserving. And we certainly appreciate you. Last two items are very quick. Just a reminder that our Board of Education, like many organizations, have professional trainings. And so, we will be at the GSBA Conference December 5th through 7th, which means the December work session will be combined with the board meeting. So, that will be at East Jackson Middle School on Monday, December the 9th. That will be our next meeting. So, with that being said, thank you for allowing us to highlight these amazing students and teachers. And Ms. Bulwark, I'll turn that to you.
Well, and I hope everybody realizes how much we enjoy coming to the schools and hearing about all these awards and these wonderful students that we are blessed with in Jackson County. So, we are proud of everybody, our teachers and these young people. So, it's just a joy for us to be with y'all tonight. And we're going to use the consent agenda, if that's agreeable with everyone. And do I have a motion that we accept items one through four?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alrighty. Okay, the motion carries. And I appreciate you folks being out with us tonight. And y'all have safe travels. They say we're gonna get some rain and cold weather. So, take care and bundle up tomorrow, you young people that are going out to catch the bus and get to school. Thank you again.